I was here for frigging, just for the zoning. I'm here. He said it was, ain't nobody here. No problem. God knows, I wish we did, but you gotta understand. It's twenty million dollars. They got that in cash, so.
Well, I just didn't.
Well, we're gonna know within the next few hours. Having it start Friday at one, I think might be some of the time. Monitoring my phone, at least, at least I hope so. And they're not gonna have a negotiating process. They just wanna be here so that they can tell their superiors, yes, we're monitoring the state figure situation, and yes, we're on time. I mean, if I had my brother, we wouldn't have day one.
You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart, and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing, but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city, Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown.
Evening. I'd like to call this June 23, 2014, regularly scheduled council meeting to order. And first order of business is to recognize Ms. Lynn Newsom, who's the co-director of the Quaker House, and ask you to come forward to the podium and lead us with the invocation. If we'll all please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance,
Dear God, let the light of your love fill our hearts, souls, and minds as we meet here today to work together for the good of our community. Let us remember that we are all part of your creation and that we are all of value in your sight. As we work together to make decisions, help us to listen to each other and keep our minds and hearts open in order to hear all voices. Thank you for giving each of us the opportunity to make this world a better place, however we are able, wherever and whenever we are able. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Council item 4.0 is the approval of the agenda and entertain a motion. Mr. Moan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda and also add item 7.26 to consent and the title of that being motion to authorize city manager to finalize details and execute lease agreement for Festival Park Plaza Building according to terms proposed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? That's Mr. Colvin is the second. Council, any discussion? I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Hirsch, you have an announcement. I'd like to recognize you, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say thanks to Epicenter Church on Fort Bragg Road for participating in their Ways to Love Fayetteville project Sunday afternoon from 1 to 4, three hours, 27 volunteers. Saved taxpayers' money because this is work the Parks and Recreation Department did not have to do, and that was to spread out 10 truckloads of brown shredded bark, five truckloads of shredded bark for the playground, and planted 37 bushes and flowers that Sunday afternoon, yesterday afternoon. So, thanks to Epicenter Church.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch, I'd like to ask you to go down front and ask Ms. Shipman to come forward. Amira Shipman, if she will come to the microphone, we have set up for you down front. Councilmember Hirsch is going to give you a little something. While you're making your way up, I'd like to recognize former Mayor Pro Tem Breeden Blackwell is in the audience joining us. Good evening. Let's say something into that microphone. Let's make sure it's turned on for you.
Hello.
Perfect. All right, Mr. Hirsch?
Certificate of recognition, on behalf of the members of the Fayetteville City Council and our more than 200,000 citizens, that's a lot of people in there, we hereby present this certificate of recognition in appreciation of Ms. Amira, is that correct?
Yes.
Shipman, North Carolina Cover Girl Princess 2013. You look very beautiful tonight, by the way.
Thank you.
For your dedication in representing the city of Fayetteville with pride, we look forward to many more accomplishments and successes. And that's presented today, the 23rd day of June 2014, and that's signed by our mayor right up there, Mayor Nat Robertson. So, on behalf of the Fayetteville City Council and all the citizens that are watching on TV, see, are you smiling, there's the TV camera. So, we just wanna say thank you so much. Congratulations for representing our city.
And Ms. Shipman, you have something to say to us, right?
You, and please speak close to the mic.
Hello, my name's Amira Shipman from Fayetteville, North Carolina, home of the Fort Bragg Army installation. I consider myself to be audacious, adventurous, and articulate. In the future, I would like to be a judge. My spare time is spent volunteering in my community, singing in my church choir, and being a positive role model for kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. You keep up the good work. And we have a proclamation to deliver this evening to Ms. Elizabeth Goolsbee, who is the director of the Fayetteville VA Medical Center, and also Mr. Robinson, Vice President of the Cumberland County Continuum of Care. If you would come forward, please. Councilmember Wright is going to bring you the, is going to bring you the proclamation. But let me say, on January 31, 2014, the Continuum of Care Homeless Population Point-in-Time Survey identified 653 homeless individuals and 472 individuals at risk of being homeless in the greater Fayetteville region, including the working poor, veterans, disabled, and mothers who have fled domestic violence. As a community outreach project of the Fayetteville Cumberland County Continuum of Care, a two-day event, the Community Homeless Stand Down Program will offer vital services such as healthcare screenings, job placement opportunities, housing support, and governmental services in collaboration with the Fayetteville Veterans Affairs Medical Center, the VA, for over 600 expected attendees. So, thank you very much. Councilmember Wright?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say, and counsel, on behalf of the great city of Fayetteville, I've sat on the last board with Continuum of Care and also these groups, which is a combination of different organizations throughout Fayetteville, and I just want to congratulate you on this recognition today, on the hard work that these people do in our community every day. And what I want to say also, that it really touches a lot of the points and major things that the council is concerned with, because when you reach out to the homeless and when you reach out to those that are less fortunate, we also deal with crime, we also deal with economic development, and on and on and on. So, on behalf of the city of Fayetteville, congratulations on a job well done, and keep up the good work. God bless you.
We would be remiss not to acknowledge the city of Fayetteville Community Development Department and also the county Community Development Department.
I'd like to echo Mr. Williams's comments. This is a great opportunity for the VA to, again, to reach out and help those veterans and veterans' families that are in need in this community. So, we take pride and pottery with the community, with the Continuum of Care in this effort.
Great. Thank you for doing what you do. Mr. Wright, Willie Wright, come forward. You didn't know this was coming, did you?
No, I didn't.
I recognize Councilmember Art.
Good to see you. Can I borrow this mic, can I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
Let's turn the face down.
Just don't sing.
All right. Can you hear me okay? Colonel Wright, we were asked to present this to you tonight. It's a certificate of recognition on behalf of the members of the city council and our more than 200,000 citizens here in the city of Fayetteville. And we present this for your meritorious, dedicated, and untiring years of volunteer community service, support, and betterment of the quality of living in the city of Fayetteville. The city of Fayetteville appreciates the sacrifices and promotion of goodwill and therefore recognizes June 28 of 2014 as Willie Wright Day. This 28th day of June 2014, signed, Mayor Nat Robertson.
Well, I'm sort of overwhelmed. All I can say is thank you very, very much, and I have truly enjoyed, because my motto is four hands are better than two.
Thank you, Colonel. And I just wanna say a special thanks. It's always great to see our veterans who get involved in our community and make such a selfless sacrifice. They did that in service to our nation. They continue to do that as volunteers, and we're very thankful.
Mr. Wright, thank you so much for doing what you do for this community. Council item 6.1 is a presentation from Carl Mitchell, who is on our personnel, or I guess oversees the Personnel Review Board for us, which is one of the committees, of course, that we put our residents on to serve, and looking forward to your overview.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for inviting me tonight to give you an update on the Personnel Review Board for your city and my city. The authority for the Personnel Review Board is displayed on the first screen, Personnel Ordinance 19-65 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-165. This is a council-appointed review board serving as an appeals board for dismissals of city employees only. They do not hear other grievance actions. Only regular full-time employees, with the exception of the department directors, may appeal their dismissal from the city to the Personnel Review Board. Dismissed regular full-time employees must have exhausted all of the administrative remedies that are available to them by the city before proceeding to the PRB. The PRB only meets when called, so the less times that we are called, the happier we are. We're called when a timely appeal is made as a result of a dismissal. There are six members currently serving on staggered two-year terms with appropriate demographic representation on the board. Four of those citizens, myself included, have knowledge and experience in the management of personnel in the public and private sector, and two others have direct supervisory experience or managerial experience over employees. No member of the board is a member of this, is an employee of the city, nor are any of their family members an employee of the city, or an officer, or an elected official. The membership cannot serve more than two consecutive terms without at least one year break between terms. Your current Personnel Review Board consists of myself as chair and the other individuals you see on the screen. The PRB hearings are closed to the public because information that is discussed during those hearings are a personnel matter. However, the hearings are recorded. A board attorney is assigned to the PRB. An attorney attends all the hearings with us and guides the board members through the hearing as we need that assistance. If the dismissed employee makes notification that he or she will have an attorney present at the hearing, the city attorney's office will send an attorney to represent the department from which the employee was dismissed. The PRB does not advocate either side. We are not advocating for either party. Members may ask questions, usually clarifying questions or follow-up questions. The dismissed employee has the burden, by the greater weight of the evidence, to prove that the action taken by the department director was unjustified. In the actual hearing, both parties make an opening statement and present their evidence. Both parties have the right to cross-examine, and both parties do make, do have the opportunity to make closing statements. At the end of the hearing, the PRB will meet and make a finding of fact, and then we make our recommendation to the city manager. Our recommendation would be to affirm the action that was taken previously by the department or to reverse the dismissal. The city manager does take our input, but makes the final decision in the matter. We have not had a lot of opportunities to be called forward. We had two hearings in 2011, two in 2012, two in 2013, and luckily, so far, none to date this year. We're hoping that next year we'll have zero there. I did wanna bring a message from the membership of the PRB to the city count, to the mayor and the city council. This is a heartfelt message. We really do believe this. We recognize the importance that the city has placed on all of us and the honor that you've given us for the opportunity to serve on the Personnel Review Board. We realize that we need to give it due diligence, we need to show much responsibility, and therefore, we take our responsibilities that you've assigned to us very seriously, and we will continue to provide top-notch service throughout the, our service to the board. We would be remiss if we didn't thank Erica Hogard and the rest of the Human Resources Development Office staff and the board, the board of attorney, for all of the assistance that they provide while we are conducting hearings. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Council, we'll move to item 7.0, which is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Second?
Mr. Moan? No? Okay. Who made the original motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And second by Mr. Crisp. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I thought that was for the approval.
Or on the motion itself? Okay. Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Yeah, I believe it is. Item 8.0 is the public hearing. Individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing should have already signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue being discussed. Each speaker will be limited only three minutes unless your group wishes to appoint just one speaker, which may take up more time. Time used in response to the, a question from city council will not be counted against your time as a speaker. Discussion following the public hearing will be limited to this body only unless someone from, unless I recognize you to respond to a question. So, when you hear your name, or when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then, when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you will have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Due to policy restrictions from this body, we will not be able to extend any time given. So, with that said, Madam Clerk, 8.01, or I'm sorry, staff, we wanna... Mr. David Nash. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, you have five public hearing items. This first item is concerning the proposed Walmart site on Gillespie Street. You already have approved the initial zoning of each of these five sites in your consent action just a minute ago. We do have, I believe, some individuals for the Walmart site signed up. But I'll leave it up to the council as to whether you wanna hear the staff presentations on one of them or any of them.
I would think for the viewing public, if you could go through them very quickly, we'd appreciate that.
No, commercial development site, Gillespie Street. All right, thank you. I'm sorry about that, sir. We had it earlier. It's not there. The requested action in this item is to annex as a satellite area the proposed commercial development site on Gillespie Street. It's expected that a new Walmart will be built on the site. It's about 35 acres land area. Petitions came in quite a while back in September of 2013. Went to the zoning commission way back in October. This map hopefully will show you the general vicinity of the area. The label is pointing to the bright green area, which is the site. The yellow areas are areas already inside the city. As you can see, there are several satellite areas nearby, such as at the Black and Decker site, Astoria Apartments. The airport is over on the right of the map, shaded in yellow. This is just one of two photos we have. This site is looking northward along Gillespie Street at the Black and Decker Road intersection. The land proposed for annexation is across the road, and this is a close-up of it. There's a sign out there indicating a Walmart will be built there. You have several options in your agenda packet and a lot of details that we won't get into here unless you need to, but the staff does recommend that you approve this annexation request, that is, approve option one effective tonight, and that you also affirm the initial zoning action that... zoning action that just happened in your consent agenda. The reasons for this are that petitions are sufficient. Originally, there were some problems, but they've been worked out, and a lot of people put a lot of time into getting the signatures needed, I'm understanding. Our city departments and the PDC divisions have reviewed the area and the proposal to annex it, and they all report that they can serve it, and the budgetary impact should be positive for the city. That concludes the presentation. Mr. Nash, stand by.
Madam Clerk.
May we have four speakers for this item? The first one is Mr. Addison Winters.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name is Ad Winters. I live at 225 Northview Drive. We have four folks here tonight. None of us have to speak. We're just wanting to make ourselves available for any questions. We don't have a presentation per se, so I just wanted to kind of clear that up.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Bo Murphy.
My name is Bo Murphy. I'm Vice President and Director of Construction for the developer on this project, and look forward to coming to your, to the great city of Fayetteville. And we're here to answer any questions. We have been involved in a project for some time now, done a lot of due diligence. We've been working closely with the Department of Transportation and all other of the agencies. And here again, we're just, we would like to answer any questions you may have of us, and we'd like to get started as soon as possible and keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
May our next speaker is Mr. Tom Seldemridge.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, Todd Seldemridge with Wolverton and Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the projects, and I can say if there's any questions, we're available to answer those.
Thank you, sir.
May our final speaker is Mr. Stephen Miller.
This may be my best, my favorite public hearing we've ever had. [laughing].
My name is Steve Miller. I'm with WRS, and I'm involved in the construction part of the project, and again, available here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
May that conclude our speakers for this item.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, go to counsel for action. Mr. McDougal.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the annexation ordinance with the effective date of June 23, 2014, as presented by David.
Very good. Seconded by Ms. Davy. Counsel, revoting, or is that discussion? All right, Ms. Jensen, was that? Okay. That's okay. Let me just reset the lights. Is there discussion on the motion, please?
I want to know how soon can we get started?
[laughing]. I think that depends on us tonight. All right, seeing, seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. 8.02 is the annexation of Cheryl Property off Gillespie Street. Mr. Nash?
Cheryl. Thank you. Shut up. Okay. This is the so-called Cheryl Property, also on Gillespie Street. It kind of goes along with the area you just annexed, but they do not quite touch each other, therefore they had to be treated separately. Petition for this one was submitted in March, went to Zoning Commission on April the 8th. This map here shows you the so-called Cheryl Property outlined in yellow, just north of the site that you just annexed. It's separated by a unbuilt street that was platted many years ago, referred to as Ash Street. And this is just looking into the site from across Gillespie Street where Ivan Drive crosses at Gillespie. So the area to be annexed is roughly to the right of that telephone pole. It's hard to really see in this photo. This is a little closer. It's a tiny lot, less than an acre. Again, the staff recommends adoption of an ordinance for this area effective tonight, June 23rd, consistent with your initial zoning action just a few minutes ago. Again, the reasons are the petition is sufficient, departments can handle this area, shouldn't be any impacts because it's all vacant land right now, and we don't know when it will be developed. Slight budget impact for the city.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item?
So we'll open and close the item. Counsel, I'll go to you for action. Ms. Davy.
I move that city council adopts the proposed ordinance effective June 23, 2014, and the city council affirms initial zoning action.
Second.
I heard Mr. Colvin first. Counsel, any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Counsel, that is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Moan, item 8.03.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to delay item 8.03 until the 11th of August, regular televised council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Moan, Mr. Crisp, counsel, discussion on the delaying this until August. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 8.04 is the annexation of Airport Road at Aviation Parkway area. Mr. Nash, welcome back.
Okay. Kill this one. I think I got that one. Okay. Again, are there many folks to sign up for this? Does anyone sign up?
For 8.4, I have a speaker.
This area is referred to as Airport Road at Aviation Parkway. It was submitted back in April by Mr. Bissett and Green from here in Fayetteville. They operate as a limited liability corporation known as BG Properties. It's located on the north side of Airport Road. On this map, the area inside the city is shown in yellow again, and the individual parcels are in several different colors here. Hope you can see that. It's about sixteen acres, made up of seven parcels, and one of them is a private street referred to as Aviation Parkway. This is just looking across the road, Airport Road at the site. This is the corner of Aviation Parkway and Airport Road, looking down Aviation Parkway in this photo. You had several options in your packet. We recommend adoption of this ordinance effective tonight. Same reasons outlined earlier. Petition's sufficient, departments can handle it, and should be positive budgetary impact. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk.
May I have one speaker for this item? Mr. Robert Balland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I'm the civil engineer for this project. I'm here on behalf of the owners, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move that city council adopt the proposed ordinance effective June 23, 2014, and city council affirms initial zoning action.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McDougal. Discussion on the item, counsel. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that too is unanimous. 8.05 is the annexation, I'm not wearing my glasses, of an area, around the Gates 4 area,
Right. This is actually for two areas, referred to as Area 1 and Area 2 of Glen Eagles, but the slides will cover both of them at one time. Looks like on March 19th, we received a petition requesting annexation of these two areas. Glen Eagles is a very small, or rather, a new part of Gates 4 already in the city. There's two little pieces of it that are in the part that was de-annexed by the General Assembly, and those are the two areas that are being requested for annexation here. They're located on Camerely Drive. This map will hopefully help you get oriented. The overall Gates 4 area is outlined there in red, is not being in the city. Everything around it, shaded in yellow, is in the city, and the labels are pointing to Area 1 and Area 2. Area 1 is in a bright yellow outline. Area 2 is in a blue outline. Hope you can see that. This map here just shows you the proposed lots for this section of Glen Eagles. Area 1 is shaded in yellow. Area 2 is shaded in blue. Just a couple of photos. This is the part of Glen Eagles already built. This is looking down Camerely Drive. The barricades at the end is where the street currently ends. The land beyond that is what's being, going to be developed in the next section of Glen Eagles, and then the two areas are there in the woods that I wasn't even able to get to with a camera.
Your time's up.
Sorry. I didn't realize.
The recommendation here applies to both areas. Again, you have options in your agenda materials, but we recommend approval of both areas effective tonight, and reasons are the same as stated earlier for the other areas. The petition is sufficient. Departments can absorb this area with no difficulty, and it should be budgetary, a positive budget impact.
Mayor pro, Tim Davy.
Mr. Nash, I just wanted to, just to verify for the, for the listening audience that these two items are voluntary petition annexation?
That's right. Yes.
Okay. We'll move into the public hearing.
May we have no speakers for this item?
How about for the next item, 8.06?
I have a question, Mayor, and that is, while the presentation was for both, Ms. McDonald, do we have to move to vote on each one separately? They're listed separately in the agenda.
Yes, sir. You could do a single motion and make sure that you include both areas.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the proposed ordinance for both Areas 1 and 2 effective June 23, 2014, having the city council affirm the zoning action.
That is for 8.05 and 8.06. Mr. Crisp?
That is correct, sir. 8.05 and 8.06 on our agenda.
All right. And since I heard about six different voices wanting to second that, I'm going to ask who seconded it?
I heard Mr. Wright calling him.
Mr. Wright it is. Mr. Wright it is. All right, Mr. Crisp and Mr. Wright. Exactly. Counsel, further discussion on the item? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 8.07, Mr. Moan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, you know, make a motion to delay, but before I do that, can we verify that there's no one signed up to speak on this public hearing tonight?
So there is nobody signed up for this item?
Okay, then, if you allow me, I'd like to delay this item, which is, you know, amendment to the city of Fayetteville, Hope Mills Annexation Agreement to adjust the line near Fisher Road where a large parcel is split by the line, and I'd like to delay that until the 11th of August, 2014, regularly televised council meeting. That is a motion to table this until August 11th, 2014.
I second.
And seconded by Mr. Crisp. Counsel, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Item 9.01 is a resolution by the city council authorizing the city manager to negotiate and acquire real property at 605 and 637 Allen Street for the Bunce Road project.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Staff has been working to identify property to acquire land for the development of affordable housing. There are three objectives to meet the city's goal, which include increasing the supply of affordable housing, improving the conditions of the low-income housing stock, and increasing home ownership opportunities. Staff has identified 605 and 637 Allen Street consisting of approximately 14.21 acres, located on the corner of Bunce Road and Old Bunce Road. This is the former site of the Oaks Mobile Home Park. Due to the dilapidated state of the mobile homes, they were removed, and the property is currently vacant and on the market. This site would meet the conditions and the objective of this purchase, would be to offer approximately fifty affordable detached single-family houses in the western part of Fayetteville to eligible families. Known as the Bunce Road Project, this development would involve a partnership with Habitat for Humanity and Kingdom Community Development Corporation. These are two of the city's community housing development organizations. Although the city, although the city of Fayetteville has in recent years expanded affordable multifamily housing to areas within the city other than east and central Fayetteville, the west Fayetteville area currently does not offer any affordable detached single-family housing for purchase to low-to-moderate income families. Staff is in the process of performing all of the due diligence requirements, and said purchase would be contingent upon favorable findings. The housing market demand analysis was received on Friday and came back with a very positive analysis of the project. The owners have agreed to sell the property for $625,000, and the source of the funds would be from the Community Development Block grant. The total appraised values of the properties as of October of 2013 was $695,500. Staff asks that counsel approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and acquire the real property known as 605 and 637 Allen Street for the Bunce Road project. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Wright?
I make the motion that we authorize...
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll get...
Go ahead, you can make the motion.
Can I make the motion? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we authorize the resolution of the city council in the city of Fayetteville to authorize the city manager to negotiate the acquired real estate or real property known as 605 and 637 Allen Street for the Bunce Road project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDougal's second, and we've got several questions. First light I saw was Councilmember Colvin.
Thank you, ma'am, for that presentation. Certainly, you know, I'm favorable on the project and the need for affordable housing for, as part of our community. I just had a couple of questions. Have we, I think, when this came up originally during a previous conversation, there were some environmental concerns. Has a Phase 1 or Phase 2 study been, have you overcome those concerns to make sure that the property is feasible from an environmental standpoint?
Yes, we have looked at the environmental study. I believe Victor might be able to answer better as to what is going to be done for
Leaving, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we did have a Phase 1 done. There was a Phase 1 that was completed, and I think there also, as a follow-up question, there was a question as to another organization that was interested in purchasing the property, and I did talk with them, and their reasons were, for not moving forward with it was because of the size of the structure that they were going to build as opposed to our building single-family homes. But the indications in the Phase 1 report, the environmental issues are very easily to overcome. Basically, it would be removal of some of the water and sewer equipment that is currently on site. But we did follow up after that previous meeting to see what their reasons were, but it wasn't that. The property wasn't feasible for this type of project as opposed to their concern with the weight of the facility. as opposed to their concern with the weight of the facility that they would have on site.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Crisp.
Mr. Wright, I apologize. You were trying to make a motion and I rudely interrupted you. Two questions, well, one question and one clarification for the public. The question concerns, an older question, sir, about septic tanks on that property. Have we resolved that question?
Well, there, it is indicated that there may be a few septic tanks on, on the site, but it wa, the site was served by sewer lines. So with, with that, it doesn't prohibit us from, from moving forward.
Does that mean our intent is to remove those as we get into construction, remove those septic tanks?
We will handle them as, as required.
Okay, and the next one, the clarification, I want to make clear for our viewing and listening public. We're talking about low-cost housing, not for rent, but for purchase. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Shuford, come talk to us about District Two and District Six.
At, at your, uh, dais, Mayor and councilmembers, you will have a, um, a sheet that shows the process that we go through for city order demolitions. And thought I would bring that to your attention. Let's see, I think I got two of me here, so let's hope that's the right one. Yep. And you will note that every one of these properties had at least ninety-seven days of process to, to get to this point. We have tonight two unoccupied residential dwellings that have been determined to be either blighted or dangerous and one accessory building determined to be dangerous. None of them are historic. The first one is five seventeen Link Street. Fire damaged in January of two thousand and fourteen. We've had a fair number of code violations and calls for nine-one-one service, as well as there are some outstanding city assessments for lot cleaning. There's the location of the property. This one is two thousand and two, Overlook Drive. It's a blighted building. Utilities have been off since December, two thousand and twelve. Fewer calls for service and fewer code violations, but still some outstanding assessments for this, this structure. The collapsed part of this is the covered garage in the back. The rest of the building is not quite in that bad a shape. Again, the location. The last one is the accessory structure. There have been eighteen calls for nine-one-one service in the last twenty-four months, one code violation. And this is a structure, because of its condition, needs to be taken down. There's the location. It's the smaller structure there on the left side of the site. Excuse me, the bottom part of the site. And we're requesting authorization to proceed with our demolition process for all three of these.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Mayor Pro Tim Davy.
I move to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition of blighted and dangerous structures located at five fifteen Link Street, two oh oh two Overlook Drive, and fourteen ninety-seven Strickland Bridge Road.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Arp. Counsel, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. We have the privilege this evening of having in our presence the Honorable Pat Timmons Goodson. Pleasure to have you join us this evening. Didn't see you sitting there earlier. I would have recognized you earlier. Counsel, we'll go to nine point zero three, which is the revenue and expenditure report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of counsel. I assume the screen will refresh itself momentarily. The report you have before you tonight is the third quarter report for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. And tonight, we're going to be talking about revenues and expenditures. And primarily, we're talking about the annual funds is what we normally report on. The focus of our information tonight will be on the general fund, stormwater fund, transit fund, environmental services fund, and then airport fund, which are the main operating funds of the city, not to include the utility funds, which you receive separate information on. The schedule before you now is a summary of our general fund revenues shown in millions as of the third quarter. And what you'll see in the first numerical column is actuals through March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Then you're comparing that to the annual budget as of March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Then the third column is actuals through March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. And then the percentage change is showing the percentage change of actuals for the current fiscal year compared to the prior fiscal year actuals. So that's what that percentage column is reflecting. In total, you can see that our actuals as of March thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen were just under one hundred and sixteen million dollars compared to our actuals as of March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen at just under one hundred and eighteen million dollars. You can see there's about a five percent increase in property taxes. And just to break that down for you, we have both real and personal property taxes and then we have motor vehicle property taxes. I break that down because motor vehicles is experiencing this year something rather unique. We transitioned from the property taxes being collected by the county to them being collected by the state. And we already knew and planned for, uh, an, an initial spike in those revenue collections in the current year and then resuming to a normal level in the following fiscal years. So real and personal property, current year tax collections have increased about two percent over the prior year. However, if you consider the impact of the transition of Department Motor Vehicles programs in terms of tax and tax together this year, we'd actually received five point one million in motor vehicle taxes compared to three point three million last fiscal year. So between the two percent increase in collections in real and personal property and the about one point eight million dollar increase in motor vehicle taxes, that shielded about a five point two percent increase as of March. Other taxes consist primarily of vehicle license tax, privileged license taxes, franchise fees, vehicle gross receipts tax, and, and so on. The primary reason that that category has declined in the current year compared to last year was for the same reason I shared with you the last quarter when I reported. It's primarily because of privileged license taxes for internet sweepstakes businesses. At March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, we collected a total of about one point one million for privileged license compared to two point four million last year. And that is specifically related to internet sweepstakes. That's the reason for the decline in that category. Then intergovernmental revenues, we'll discuss more specifically on a separate slide, but that's things like our utility taxes we receive through the state and our sales taxes. And you can see overall that there really is no increase. We're pretty much collecting almost the exact amount of money that we had collected same time last year. What I will point out with our intergovernmental revenues is there's a bit of a time lag in terms of sales tax reporting to the local government because they're received by the state. And about seventy-five days after the end of that particular reporting month, we get the money. In terms of the utility taxes, it lags about seventy-five days following the end of the quarter. We received that quarterly. So we'll, we'll talk about that in a moment, a little more about intergovernmental revenues. In terms of the next category, which is fees and services, you can see we've experienced about a fifteen percent decrease in that particular category. And I believe, just as I mentioned in the previous quarterly update, a significant portion of that relates to declines in building permit revenues for building construction, HVAC, plumbing and electrical permits. So that overall category is down about eight hundred thousand roughly. About five hundred and fifteen thousand of that is specifically associated with those building construction permits. It also had a decline in this particular year because we had some revenues that we had been reporting in the general fund that are now appearing in other funds. And two specific examples of those are, for example, the North Carolina Department of Transportation's street sweeping. Since our street sweeping expenses are reported in the stormwater fund, so are the associated revenues with that function. So those revenues are reported there. And then we had some lease revenue associated with our transfer station for solid waste. I believe it's Waste Industries that has the con, we have the contract with where they lease our transfer station. Those revenues are now reported in the solid waste fund. So that really is what accounts for the change in fees and services. In terms of the other revenue category, there's a, a small increase in that revenue, but relative to the size of that overall category, it's about a seventeen percent increase. And that's primarily due to charging indirect cost allocation charges to the solid waste enterprise fund, where previously it had been reported in the general fund. So that's why you see an increase in that category. And then the other financing sources consist primarily of two revenues. And that's the transfer from the electric utility fund at about twelve point three million, that's budgeted, and a planned vehicle installment financing agreement at two point two million. Our electric fund transfer is in line with the current year budget and we do expect to execute a loan agreement within the next couple of months for motor, for the motor vehicles that we were planning to finance. The final category, under fund balance appropriation, is really merely a budgeting of funds from our savings account, if you will. You'll never see that as an influx of actual revenue. It's really drawing on resources. So you're going to always see us reporting actuals for fund balance appropriation at zero because it's not an actual inflow of revenue. On this slide, as I mentioned previously, we were going to discuss briefly some intergovernmental revenues. And the major categories are identified there for you. Sales taxes, as you can see, we budget over thirty-five million dollars a year in sales tax collections. That is the gross collection. That's before we remit a portion of that back to the county and other local municipalities. So that's the gross collection. Just so that you're aware, we're reporting actually eight months of sales tax collections, even though this is a nine-month period that we're reporting on. If you'll remember, I just mentioned the lag. So at the time this report was prepared, and you'll recall, we actually had to postpone the presentation a couple of weeks. At the time this was prepared, we actually had eight months of sales tax collections. So what we do for the prior year, we, we show you what the eight-month collections were for that same timeframe. So you can see that there's roughly, it's like a one-fifth of one percent increase in sales tax collection. They remain roughly unchanged compared to the prior year through the same time period. And again, that's through February collections. Our utility taxes, while we're doing, through the March thirty-first quarter, we had actually only received two quarters of utility tax collections at the time this report was prepared. And you can see there's very little change in those revenues as well. While there's less than one-half of one percent increase for that same time period last year, electric franchise tax went up about two point six percent. Our telecommunications cap tax that we received from the state declined over six percent. And then the other categories fell slightly, resulting in the overall marginal, very marginal increase in utility taxes. I think, as I mentioned at the last time we met, we talked about PAO bill revenues. We have received all of our PAO bill revenues through the quarter ending March thirty-first. We get that in two distributions. We've collected all of that. So we know that we actually achieved our budget. And we were about one point five percent higher than we were last year. So all of those revenues are in. Our federal and other state revenues actually declined a little bit. And that was to be expected because we had a grant last year for some firefighter positions that expired. So when those revenues fall off, of course, you're not going to see those revenues continue in future years. That was the primary reason that the revenues in that category declined a little bit. I will point out that the only remaining significant revenue to be collected in that category is the beer and wine tax that we received from the state. We budgeted just under a million dollars for the collection of beer and wine taxes. We actually received that distribution, and you'll see that in the last quarter report. We received that money in May. We actually were under budget there, about thirty-two thousand. So our revenues in beer and wine actually fell short. You don't see that in this report, but you will see it in a final fourth quarter report. It was thirty-two thousand less than budget. And then finally, the last category on this slide is referred to as local intergovernmental revenues. And that's primarily the money that we received from Cumberland County to operate their recreation program. That's the vast majority of the revenue in that category. So when you look at all these revenues combined, last fiscal year through March thirty-first, for the, for the periods that we're reporting here, we received just under thirty-eight million dollars this year through March thirty-first. It's almost dead on, the same amount of money, just under thirty-eight million and roughly no change. This slide is really just to illustrate the volatility of our sales tax revenues. What we do is kind of show a rolling twelve-month period. The blue line is the most recent twelve months. The red line is the same month, twelve months ago. So you can see what our revenue collections are in sales tax by month. And they pretty much stay, although they're volatile month to month, they're tracking pretty closely for the same period last fiscal year, which is a little disappointing. We'd actually hoped to see those grow a little bit. This particular slide shows you general fund expenditures by major category. General administration includes the City Council, City Manager's Office, Corporate Communications, Finance, Human Resources, Information Technology, and the Legal Office. You can see there's been about a twenty-one percent increase in this particular category. And over one million dollars of that, so you're looking at just under, you're looking at under two million. Over one million dollars of that alone is related to IT. And that's principally related to project funding, related to specific ITP projects. In fiscal year two thousand and thirteen through the third quarter, we had transferred about one point one million for projects. This year, consistent with the ITP, we had transferred about one point eight million. So information technology is over half of the change there. The other increases for IT relate to maintenance contracts and then some personnel costs. In addition to that, we had the election this year. That only happens every other year, so that's going to skew numbers as well. The election costs alone were over two hundred and fifteen thousand for this fiscal year. That also contributes to a significant portion of that change. And then we also had, I think the positions were, were fully staffed in the manager's office this fiscal year compared to last year through that same time period. That contributed somewhat to the, to the change. And then we also have the alignment project that we're working on, and that contract is contributing to the change as well. See if there's something else specifically I wanted to point out to you. The change in Environmental Services, we're obviously spending money on that function. Again, just to remind you that Environmental Services is now reflected in a separate fund, separate from the general fund. So that's the reason that appeared, that we had six million last year. And while there's zero reported in Environmental Services for this year, what you're seeing is the category, other appropriations, has increased significantly because while the Environmental Services function does not get reflected in the general fund, the general fund does substantially contribute to the solid waste functions. fund does substantially contribute to the solid waste functions, and that actually appears in the other appropriations category. Parks and Recreation is up in large part due to about one point one million transferred this year to various maintenance projects and building renovations, building renovation And then the other functions category consists of community development, development services, and human relations. And that category is pretty much where it was same time last year for that three-quarter period. So you can see overall, our general fund expenditures as of March thirty-first were just under one hundred and four million dollars compared to the current year through that same time period at just under one hundred and nine million, reflecting about a five percent change in total expenditures this year over the prior year. The Stormwater Fund here, you can see how much we generate in stormwater fees. We're pretty much on target with our budget, and you wouldn't expect this revenue to change significantly because the fee was unchanged. So it was just under five point two million last year, just over five point two million this year through that same period of time. And you would, at this point, have expected to collect most of your stormwater fees because they are collected on the tax bill. Then we have some other minor revenues that are reported in this fund, and we do have a one point seven-six million dollar fund balance appropriation in this year, and that's primarily associated with projects, project funding. You can see we've spent about five point six-six million this year compared to seven point seven-seven million last year, and that pretty much is attributed to project funding that we transferred last year that has, that did not occur this year. Then in terms of the Transit Fund, total revenues as of March thirty-first, 2013 were just over five million dollars. This year, at March thirty-first, they were about four point seven million dollars. You can see that in a budget of over seven million dollars, about two point four million of that comes from federal and state grants. We had not collected as much in federal state grants as of March thirty-first this year compared to the prior year because we were awaiting approval of our grant. We have since received approval for that grant for the current year. As a matter of fact, I think it was late last week, or may have even been today, but late la- late last week, I know we drew about one point one million dollars since that grant has now been approved. So that was planned and expected to draw down those funds. You can see our bus fares, while we budgeted about just over one million, as of the third quarter last year, we collected about seven hundred and twenty thousand. So far this year, through the same period of time, we've collected about eight hundred and forty thousand. So those revenues have increased. And then vehicle license taxes, if you'll recall, there's a five-dollar fee. Five dollars goes to the general fund, and then the other five dollars on motor vehicles goes to the transit program. And that was done five or six years ago. I don't recall the exact year to enhance, so that we could enhance transit services, which have been done. And again, you're seeing an increase in vehicle license tax because that's collected at the same time we collect the motor vehicle taxes. So you're going to see a one-year spike, and then you're going to see it normalize in years after that. And then the other significant category I would point out to you would be the general fund transfer. The general fund contributes a significant portion of the transit operational budget each year. As you can see, we have budgeted about two point eight, two point nine million dollars from the general fund this year. Through the third quarter, we had transferred just over two point one million. The same timeframe last year, we transferred about one point nine million. So overall, while our revenues are down a little in transit, that's primarily because we were not able to draw the federal grant funds, which we are now able to do and will be reflected in the fourth quarter report. And then our expenditures year-to-date are just under five million compared to four point six million last fiscal year. Then the Environmental Services Fund, again, we have the solid waste fee, which I believe is thirty-eight dollars a year per household. We have over sixty thousand households, so our budget's about two point three-three million. As of this report, we had collected two point two-eight million. Again, we collect that on the tax bill, so you would expect the majority of those revenues to have been collected by that point. So there's very little change, about one point two percent increase in collections this year over prior year. And then we have some other minor revenues associated with our solid waste function. And then, as I pointed out earlier, the general fund contributes a significant amount of money to fund this operation, over seven million dollars budgeted this fiscal year. And year-to-date, as of March thirty-first, we had transferred over five million to fund this function. So out of a budget of ten point four million dollars, at March thirty-first, we had collected eight million dollars of that toward this operation, again, primarily coming from the general fund. And of course, revenues and expenditures in this fund are going to increase substantially because this is the first year in which those operations for the general solid waste services have been reflected in this fund. I believe this may be toward the end of my presentation, but just to report on the airport fund, you have major categories of revenue for the airport fund include property leases, franchise fees, some other operating revenues. And then we had a fund balance appropriation of zero for this particular year. So our total revenue budget for the airport is about four point eight million dollars. At March thirty-first, we collected about three point one million. We collect about three point two million last fiscal year. But there, while there's a small decrease in the change in revenues, this fund more than covers its own operations out of its revenue stream and actually reimburses the general fund for indirect services that we provide, such as finance, city manager's office. So we do try to reallocate our cost of administration to our funds where possible. Our expenditures for the current year were just under two point five million, and our expenditures last year were just over three million. So you can see even year-to-date that they had more than covered their operations, at least at that point in time. And that represents the end of my report, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Anything I can't answer tonight, I'll be sure to get back with you on.
And we do have a couple, Ms. Smith. Don't go anywhere. Councilmember Arp, I'm sorry, Councilmember Crisp.
Ms. Smith, back to your second slide. I think it was expenditures.
This one, or?
Yeah, that, that's a good one.
Okay.
That's not the one. It was expenditures. There it is.
Okay.
There it is. Now, I want to make sure, because I want those that are viewing to understand, as I look at the second column from the left, and you stop me when I'm wrong in the analogy, we budgeted a hundred and fifty, three point six-eight million, right?
Yes, sir.
And so as of the end of March of this year, we've spent, I'm on that bottom line, a hundred and eight, call it a hundred and nine million.
Yes, sir.
And if we look at it like that, then that means that we got about thirty-six million more that we can work with in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. So my usual question to you, how are we doing?
I mean, I think we're doing, I think we're doing okay so far. I, I think the most disappointing news up to this point, and I think we shared this when we were talking about the budget for the new fiscal year, is that our sales tax revenues have been a little disappointing. And then our utility taxes have not grown to the level, quite to the level we had hoped. So that, while I think overall we're going to be fine, I think that particular revenue category, particularly sales tax, is a bit disappointing. And hopefully, we hope for that to rebound next year. I know that there, with the issues on base and everything, that had some local impact.
Do you think we might end up going into fund balance to, balancing out, or you think we're in good shape?
Well, I mean, we do have a planned use of fund balance. Most of, almost all of it relates to capital expenditures and our capital plan. So I wouldn't be surprised at all if we didn't use some of our fund balance, but I would expect the vast majority of that to be used for capital as we've planned to do.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Smith, thank you for the presentation. And I had a similar question along the line at Mr. Crisp, you know, because for the, the general fund, the unrestricted portion, when you had the early part, just the general fund?
Oh, the revenues?
The revenues and the expenditures.
Yes, sir.
I saw about, you know, one seventeen point five revenues, and it was one oh eight point nine, I didn't say one oh nine. And so it looked like we had about eight point five more revenue, you know, for that, where we have more leeway to spend than we do in the other funds. Is that typical too, or do we have?
I think it is because you think about your business cycle. The majority of your property taxes are collected in the first half of your year because all those bills could do, come due, and they're late, if not paid by, like, January sixth. But then you have to operate the rest of the year, so you're drawing down on those revenues throughout the year. We're paying police and fire and the rest of us for the entire fiscal year. So you would expect revenues at that point to, unless we had done a significant portion of our capital spending, you would expect our revenues to be ahead of our expenditures. You're going to see that gap narrow as the months continue. And just to give you an idea, we pay the sales tax reimbursement to the county and the municipalities. When we get the final information in for the March month for sales tax, we will then compute and determine how much we owe for the entire quarter to the county. So some of those things have yet to be processed, but will be processed within the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Coleman.
Ms. Smith, thank you for that. Just had a question for you on the sales tax. Does that include the food and beverage tax? That's all lumped into that?
We don't get the food and beverage tax.
Okay, so we, we get nothing on?
It's just the regular sales tax that we get. Now, there is, there is sales tax on food.
Right, that's what I mean.
But it's not the, it's not the food and beverage tax that you're, the tourism, what's the term? The prepared meals tax is what I'm thinking of. That's not what this is.
Okay, because that was, that was a little perplexing to me with, with some of the retail establishments, mostly food services, how we were flat or declining on that. So that, that was a good question. Thank you.
Thank you for helping recall, recall that.
Councilmember Wright. You didn't push your button. That's all right.
I just have a question in reference to the investment income. I see here we're looking at nineteen, which was a one point five-six. Can you explain that investment income to me a little clearly?
Let me get to that category. Oh, you're looking at the detailed report. Oh, okay, sorry. It's roughly about nineteen thousand. What we do is we actually pool all of our resources together, and we don't distribute investment income for, for all of the funds until the end of the fiscal year. So we're projected to collect around three hundred thousand in investment income, and the income that you're seeing there relates primarily to things like assessments, some other direct investment income that we get. So when we have the, our, the city's funds in our checking account and in our savings account, and then we invest in agencies and commercial paper and things like that, you're going to see the distribution of those revenues at the end of the fiscal year. That's when we've historically reported that.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Counsel, I don't see any other lights for questions, so I'll entertain a motion for Oh, we're just receiving the report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I think I'm with you for the next item as well.
Oh, well, don't go anywhere. Nine point zero four is the CIP or the Capital Improvement Plan for two thousand fifteen through nineteen. Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir. If you'll recall, this was actually scheduled to be on your agenda June ninth with the budget we were proposing at that time. If you'll recall, we made several changes to the operating budget, which impacted the Capital Improvement Plan and the ordinances, which are basically the spending authority for those capital projects. So at the last meeting, you went ahead and adopted the operating budget, which is perfectly fine to do, and we said at this meeting, we would then follow up with the changes made the afternoon, the evening of June ninth. We would follow up at the meeting tonight and have this item for your consideration and potential approval. So the CIP that was in your agenda packet for tonight, at the memo that we provided with that item, basically said the baseline was the CIP as it was presented in the capital, in the annual operating budget. If you'll recall, in the budget document that you received initially a couple of months ago, there was a section that identified all the planned capital improvement and information technology improvement projects. It was our goal here to outline the changes to that plan as we understood them based on our last meeting with you. So I'll just point those out, but they're listed in your mem- your memorandum. I'm not sure if you have that in front of you, but you could follow with me if you desire. The, the big change that we made was adding the two million dollars in one-time funding for the Parks and Recreation projects. And if you'll recall, the discussion was that in the coming weeks, you would decide how you want to use those funds. So that is in the plan for fiscal year fifteen. We have not broadened ordinance for you tonight because those projects have yet to be determined. So there's not a resulting budget action, but it is in the Capital Improvement Plan. We removed the ten million in potential bond-funded street and sidewalk enhancements for fiscal year sixteen through 2019. That had been in the, the CIP for a couple of years, but since, and that was really anticipated that we might do that along with the Parks and Recreation Bond Projects. Since we're not really prepared to move forward with those just yet, it seemed reasonable to remove the associated street and sidewalk enhancements that were bond-funded because we really don't have a good vehicle to do that for the moment. So we did remove those ten million in projects. And as I recall, you didn't really spend much time in debate or discussion about those items, so it seemed appropriate to remove them until we discussed those further. Funding for land acquisition for the Merkison Road Redevelopment Project was reduced by two hundred and fifty thousand, and the majority, if not all, of the things that follow were related to freeing up two million to dedicate for Parks and Recreation. So that was reduced by two hundred and fifty thousand for Merkison Road Redevelopment in fifteen. Funding for sidewalks was reduced by a hundred and fifty thousand. Funding for street resurfacing was reduced by four hundred and forty-five thousand. And if you recall, what we said at the meeting at the time was that depending on where our overall revenues come in, if you're satisfied with the level of fund balance you've achieved, then what we can do in the current, well, in the new fiscal year that's literally about to begin, once the audit's complete, then you could decide if you wanted to do an appropriation from fund balance and restore one or more of these items. But I think the discussion really circled around street resurfacing primarily. Then we also reduced two hundred and fifty thousand of funding planned for the Public Street Development Project in fifteen, 2015. And then due to the reduction in the cost for the Cross Creek District Office Project, the renovations were funded in fiscal year fifteen budget, but because of the size of the renovations, and we're talking about renovating a leased facility, they really weren't included in the CIP moving forward. But we do have some, I think, I, I'm trying to recall if it was seventy-five thousand or something like that related to Cross Creek Office renovations, but it is in the operating budget.
Hasn't that been modified since?
I thought it remained, it originally was, was higher, but in the most recent discussions we had, I believe it was reduced to seventy-five thousand. Now, if there've been developments since we, we talked about it in the budget, I, I'm not aware of that. We also reduced the building renovations budget for 2015 by two hundred and fifty thousand, and that was for this building, and there was some discussion that ensued around that, if you'll recall that. Then we also had some money set aside for a potential Amtrak Station renovation grant, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand in the general fund. What we said was, should we receive a grant award from the state, you could consider at that time accepting the grant and appropriating the local match from the general fund at that point. At the, up to this point, though, we've not received notice of an award. We also eliminated a hundred thousand dollars for improvements at the tech site, tech site, so that we could dedicate the two- so that we could dedicate the two million for the parks projects. That was a component of that funding. And then we also included accelerating about a hundred and fifty thousand of funding from fiscal year sixteen, twenty sixteen to twenty fifteen, for the farmers market projects, which includes the Merkison Road project and seed projects. So no change in the total amount of funding that was recommended, but rather an acceleration of one hundred and fifty thousand of those funds to the upcoming fiscal year. And that really does summarize the changes made to the capital improvement plan, and if I recall, no changes to the information technology plan at all.
Councilmember Moan and Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question probably for Mr. Voorhees and Attorney McDonald. I look at tonight as this item being two separate actions, to approve the CIP and the ITP, and then approve the budget amendments, capital project ordinance amendments. And I would like counsel, you know, if you would approve to separate those into two votes, one for the CIP, ITP, you know, information technology plan, and then a separate vote, you know, for all the capital project ordinance amendments in the back. Is that legal? Okay, so, that's what I, do I need to make that in the form of a motion, or are we still in questions?
You are certainly welcome to make that in the form of a motion, if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that council allow us to separate this agenda item into two separate votes. The first one being to approve the capital improvement plan and the information technology plan, and then behind that in the budget, the second vote would be for other capital project ordinance amendments to support the budget that was passed two weeks ago.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crisp. That's what's next. I see Mr. Coleman's light.
Well, I had, prior to that, just had a question. Ms. Smith, just so you can clarify it for, for some of the listening audience, when we were moving items around to try to, to get the additional investment in the Parks and Rec, that was a one-time reduction in street resurfacing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to kind of supplement this particular year, but you're saying, I think I heard you say during your presentation, that in the event, if there are any excess funds after audit purposes take place, that that could be restored to either street resurfacing or some of the other reduced items, is that?
If the council wished.
If the council, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Yeah, the question is to Councilmember Moan. Explain your reasonings for wanting to divide that vote.
Yes, in the, the CIP and the ITP, there are multiple, multiple projects. Some I support, some I don't support. In the capital project ordinance amendments, there are only a few projects listed in there, so I didn't want to vote against everything, the whole kit and caboodle. There, there was something in the CIP, ITP that I did not support, and I wanted to vote against that, but then at the same time, support the capital project ordinance amendments, which relate to other projects that I do support. So it's just a way, otherwise I vote for the, no for the whole thing. I mean, it's, however, whatever you guys want to do.
Any other further discussion on the motion? And we'll address that motion first. Oh, Mr. Arp?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote on the motion to separate these That is nine to one, Mr. McDougal voting against. Mr. Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Smith, I just, I just want to make sure, I, I thought when we had the discussion, and I'm going to go back to Mr. Coleman's question, when we were talking about the, the four hundred thousand dollar for street resurfacing, I, if my memory serves me right, I made the recommendation that we go ahead and agree that we would move that out of, money out of the general fund to cover that, so we wouldn't do a reduction in the street resurfacing, that we could just, you know, that was a small amount, we could just go ahead and make a decision to do that out of the general fund.
I, I recall we talked about that on another item. I don't recall which specific item, but specifically street resurfacing, that was not my understanding. And that was?
There were two items, and I believe the, the recommendation I made was that that was a relatively small amount of money, and I think someone said that's budget dust, and, and certainly a one-time movement out of the general fund to cover it, to keep from decrementing, you know, something as important as street sweeping, or street paving, that we, we do that, but I just wanted to bring that back up.
Mr. McDougal.
I was trying to figure, you were using the term general fund, but were you talking about fund balance?
Yes, excuse me, fund balance, yes. Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
Counsel, any other discussion? All right, we'll entertain a vote, or entertain a motion, rather.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the CIP budget as presented by Ms. Smith and the ITP as presented by Ms. Smith.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Wright, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that is split with Mr. Crisp, Ms. Jensen, Mr. Wright, Ms. Davey, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Hirsch, Mr. McDougal voting in favor, Mr. Arp, Mayor Robertson, Ms. Moan voting All right, is there a motion for the capital project ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the capital project ordinance amendments two thousand and fifteen dash one through two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen.
Have a motion?
And the ordinances as well?
And the, and the associated ordinances, yes, ma'am.
That's capital project ordinance twenty fifteen dash one through twenty fifteen dash seven.
Yes, ma'am.
That's acceptable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hirsch, council discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Council, favorite item is next.
I don't see a draw.
Y'all have a nice night.